I didn't even know this and kind of one of the things that I learned is that apparently there's a massive amount of migratory birds that go right through the area. So there's people that come from globally to try to see, you know, for all these bird logic things. So making sure that that, you know, doesn't get damaged because that's a, you know, a tourist attraction. So you want to make sure that it's integrated in with, uh, with that. And because it's so close to the coastline, you've got a hundred year floods, five hundred year floods, coastal management areas, environmentally sensitive things that are happening. So you've got all of those different considerations. Normally DNR, DEQ, you kind of work with. On the tribal side, the tribe has its own environmental department. So it's, you know, coming up with these projects, putting them together, and then early on in the planning, working with environmental because you don't want to go, you know, you don't want to spend a hundred thousand dollars on, you know, design contracts and then have environmental come in and say, oh, this is the worst design I've ever seen. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna blow this up in front of, you know, and tell council that this is a terrible idea. So you want to kind of mitigate that and just bringing in, bringing in as many stakeholders as you can. I mean, you know, the kind of the downside is, is, you know, fun projects and everybody wants to get involved and everybody's like, oh, why don't we do it this way, this way, this way? It's like, okay, well, you know, we'll consider some of those. So it's managing the enthusiasm for something new with kind of, you know, keeping them in their swim lane, if you will. So worry about the environmental when you, you know, everyone will have a chance to, you know, to be part of these projects and, you know, bring them along because that's, you know, that's what you want. You want to create excitement and create buzz. I mean, you get more people to support these things, you know, the better off it'll work. But then you're kind of, you know, you're adding more cats to the herd, you know, in some ways and, and, but by and large, it's, you know, it's manageable. It's just you've got to make sure that you're thinking about it prior and it's like, how are this, how are we going to engage? What was the strategy? What's the timeline look like? Where does each person slot in or each department slot in? And, you know, uh, builds your, you know, kind of your project management concept from the ground up and kind of look at that first, I think, because environmental's big. And, you know, whether it's air quality or whether it's, you know, you're, you know, where are the wetlands or, you know, are there any, you know, culturally sensitive areas that you can and can't be in, you know, all those. There's a shopping list, whether it's a tribal, whether it's a tribal project or municipal project or state project or federal project or private corporation. I mean, there's all of those things that, that's a common theme through all of those type of, you know, type of development projects.
Thank you. Tell us about a situation where you welcome new ideas or suggestions from others and how did this information affect your decision and your approach?
Um, well, being part of economic development, we get a lot of leads and things coming from all different sources. So lots of people have projects that they want. Particularly in a tribe, there's tribal members that will, you know, call in and say, hey, we should do this. It seems to be of late. I'm trying to think of, a good example is cannabis. You know, that's, it's a market that everybody seems to be really excited about. Unfortunately, it's still, you know, tribes are federal protected and of all of the things to do on tribal trust land, growing marijuana is probably the worst you can do because it's still illegal on a federal basis. So everyone's excited about it and think that it's a sovereign nation, that this should work out perfectly. It doesn't. There's banking regulations, there's all sorts of things that could potentially go wrong. So you're, you're getting people that are really adamant and really enthusiastic about this particular sector and then trying to talk through, all right, here are all of the things on why this is not a good idea at this moment in time, or these are the things that need to be answered. And when people are really enthusiastic about something, they don't want to hear all the things of why it could go wrong. But that's kind of part of my job is to explain, all right, these are the things that can go right. You're right, you know, you've got a valid identification of the market, but in this situation, here's all the things that could potentially go wrong. Um, you know, that's something that we've had to deal with, you know, almost on a daily basis. In fact, as I was driving over here, I got two different people calling me about, you know, grow operations, cannabis dispensary and, um, CBD production. So, you know, just, they just called in, you know, like, everybody's got my cell phone. So a bunch of people just, you know, called and they have these ideas, so, you know.
So Lowell is the hotbed for cannabis in Kent County. I give the, I give the council credit, credit in that they, when I went to the state vote, the citizens of Lowell voted yes. And so our council then, when companies approached or before they approached deciding whether Lowell would be a part of that or not, the council voted yes to be a part of that. And I give that, not all of them agreed with it, but because the citizens, that's what you're supposed to represent, they said yes. So we do. So we're in the phase of a potential, um, girlhouse. I believe it's.
It's local, actually.
Huh?
It's local.
No, it's local. And also retail outlets. So just to, so I just want, you know.
Right, I know.
You're given that position, you know, what you're talking about is you're going to be thrown in.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, honestly, the, you know, the grow operations would be great. I'd love to do it because you, you know, you lease land, you're, you have an asymmetric risk of the market. So all the risk of the market is going on the growers. So they're going to have to deal with, you know, security, distribution, processing, you know, delivery to market. You know, as a utility, I like it because the big giant halogen lights use a lot of electricity in a small confined space. I can get more megawatt solar than a per square foot basis in those operations. So, yeah, it's, it's nice. Just the problem is, is that, you know, on tribal trust land, it's federally regulated and that's, you know, that opens up. So the cannabis in state or within a municipality that's, that wants to, you know, get into that market, that's a better execution of that than, you know, within, within, within Indian country.
With your expertise in economic development, and Mike probably had more questions about that than I would. So our footprint here in the community, her footprint is limited. You know, you've got consumers outside, you know, are surrounding us and everything. So at some point, our economic development for Lowell Light and Power is, correct me if I'm, I mean, is, is limited where in land that we have inside the city limits, a good share of a lot of developing land is outside the city. I mean, what would be, how would you approach getting more economic development here in the city as, as the manager of Lowell Light and Power?
I, I think if you're, you know, if you're kind of land constrained, you know, because you got a, you know, particular footprint that you cannot.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, our biggest issue is, we're landlocked, so there's, you know, city limits can only go from car.
Right.
Really what has been happening like for us, what happened, we're dealing with an issue right now outside the city limits where, um, far about four miles away, they want our water sewer. And our position is, well, you know, that's, that's great, but you have to incorporate attention to the limits.
Well, you've got to annex that land and that stuff.
We can annex.
We can't annex it?
Part of the Michigan law, you can't annex.
Oh, okay.
But we can do a 425 with them. And for the city's benefit, I'm of the position that you can never run any utility outside the city limits without a 425. And, and that's obviously, you know, in a lot of places, that's not an issue at all. The town should just help and do it. In this instance, that's not the case. So we, obviously there's opportunities that, you know, we miss, but at the end of the day, it really doesn't cost us anything because we're basically giving away our assets for nothing. So there's the double-edged sword, but it's the difficult issue. So that being said, our biggest, our biggest issue is trying to preserve what we have, trying to find opportunities within our small confines and how we can try and, you know, reinvest and build up within our, within our city limits. That's our biggest, that's our biggest challenge. Marijuana, to be honest, is probably a very good opportunity for us because of, because of that. Now, is it going to make us a ton of tax money in the day? The excise tax stuff remains to be seen, but an area that I know that's going to do us very well is the pilot we get from Light and Power because these grow operations are going to be providing quite a bit of electric, electric, you know, nothing else but which returns off your sales, which returns increases the pilot to the city. We need to kind of pilot.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, what we've looked at and gone through is that, you know, I don't know what the building restrictions are, but if you go vertical, they're plants and they're going in a hydroponic series. So, you know, pumping water up a couple of stories, you can increase the grow operations by going vertical and not having to worry about spread outside. It does a couple of things as you're, you're, you know, you have that verticalness, you've got a smaller, you know, base footprint, security and, you know, access control is a little easier than having 20 acres where you've got a fence and hope nobody cuts the fence trying to get in. Um, you know, there's, there's ways of working around it, the technology of the grow places. And a lot of these plants are really subject to disease, insects. So, you know, cannabis is great in a controlled greenhouse type environment. It's not really good as a row crop. Um, you know, and, you know, you've got all sorts of cross pollination issues, you've got quality control issues. Those are, it seems to be better in, you know, in a controlled greenhouse and just make a vertical greenhouse because then you can, you know, you can have trays and plants that go up, you know, kind of like the, what is that, the new, um, the new car company where they've basically got a vending machine for your car, CarVax or something like that. You go in and it's, you know, it's like a pest dispenser of cars. I mean, you can do, you can do the same thing with all of these different plants and you can have, you know, you could have, work with these grow operators and, you know, take some, you know, even some brown field or green, you know, areas that, you know, don't really necessarily have a strong development case, that you can take that because it's just plants. It's plants that need, you know, water and light in some fashion and security and, you know, they're doing things like that. And then, you know, there's, there's also, you know, Lowell's in a good slot, being close to a major metropolitan area in between two, you know, in between two, you know, relatively large manufacturing places. Um, you know, there's, I, I think there's going to be more, more growth in electrification of, you know, not necessarily individual cars like, you know, Tesla or, um, you know, some of the GM offerings, but I think you're going to see a lot more of the, um, the last mile logistics. Short haul freight is going to be electrified just because it kind of makes sense. Um, and if you had some place where, you know, you could use the ability to, you know, generate power and be close to an area where trucks can come in, they can stop for an hour, recharge, you know, even those big semis that are rolling out. Um, I think Rivian, Rivian and Tesla are the two, the Nikola, Nikola or however you pronounce them, they seem to be imploding, you know, every minute of the day. Is there some new fiasco that's dealing with that company? But, you know, that last mile seems to be a good way. You've got a big rail yard that, you know, Intermodal can come in, you can drop those, you drop those containers onto, you know, onto those trucks, you can get them to Lansing, get them to, um, you know, get them to, you know, Battle Creek, Grand Rapids, Kalamazoo, we've covered all that and, you know, you're going to probably have a fair number of those charging stations pop up in places like Michigan City, Indiana and Portage because it's on the corridor to Chicago. Land's going to be cheaper there. You know, I don't see a lot of loop charging stations for big trucks just because of the size you need for turnaround. But an area that can do that, you know, you're, you're, you're kind of at the outer range of going from Michigan City. You know, you've got 150, 200 miles of range on some of these vehicles, particularly when you load them down with 50,000 pounds of, of stuff they're carrying. Now you've got a, a jump off spot where you can charge to continue going or companies can, you know, as they adjust their logistic models, look at how they can take advantage of some of these, some of these nodes and build that out as generation assets gets distributed out from the grid and we move away from, you know, giant baseload, nuclear and coal plants, more distributed energy. You're going to see, I think, logistics follow that pattern along as more of these vehicles become electrified and it becomes a better way of, a better way of converting energy for hauling. So instead of, you know, burning a lot of diesel, you know, even trains, I mean, they burn a ton of diesel, but they do that to create electricity. So, you know, kind of taking that model and moving that down into the last mile, you know, as more people, you know, shop online or shop online and pick up in a store, you know, retail's going to be more of, you know, half warehouse, half storefront. So you're going to have more deliveries, more storage, more inventory. And in order to have that happen, you're going to have, you know, you're going to have those last mile challenges to be able to, you know, be able to be one of the first places with these charging stations. You know, you don't need a lot, probably two, three maybe at most, just to start the node. And then once you're there, you know, working with the logistics companies and the big trucking companies and say, all right, you're going to take 200 of these vehicles when they come out, start using this city as a jump off point for when you're planning your routes through Michigan, through kind of the industrial corridors that are here in Southern Michigan, you know, connecting Indiana for Chicago and Indianapolis and Cleveland. You know, you can, they're going to start doing that. They're going to adjust their logistics pattern and those, those communities that do that first will, you know, probably be in a better place to take advantage of it. And you're close to Grand Rapids, you're a couple of miles north of I-96, you know, drive in, sit for an hour in the community, you know, have lunch, whatever, takes your, takes the vehicle to charge, you know, jump back in, you're back on the road. So those are kind of, you know, some of the things that, you know, you can bring, you know, just figuring out what are the issues that are there that you can take advantage of and just, you know, looking at the marketplace and trying to come up with ideas that, you know, either nobody's thought of or you're in a position to be first mover. A lot of times first movers establish a beachhead and it's hard to knock them out.
As a board, we encourage, we did and we will continue to encourage our general manager to be in the electrical industry, obviously local, we're the general manager here, but in the state organizations such as MPPA, National APPA, um, to the legislative, going to the legislation rallies and so on. I don't know how many times, but there's four or five times out of the year that you'll be, you know, traveling. Along with, there's going to be in this industry, you're going to have storms, you're going to have different things that you're going to have to deal with. Describe a time when you had to change important plans outside of work to meet work demands. What were the circumstances and how often does this happen to you and how do you feel about it?
Um, I'm trying to think. A number of years ago, um, when I was in, you know, on the portfolio management side, the mortgage market started to unravel. So there was a lot of, you know, when Lehman Brothers failed and Bear Stearns failed and all of these places were blowing up, I was managing those, you know, mortgage related assets. So I forgot which one failed. I think it was Lehman Brothers because we had, you know, counterparty, you know, repo money with them, it was kind of an arcane investment topic. But there was, there was an instance where I was, I think I was through the security perimeter. I was through the security perimeter going on vacation and got a call that this was all kind of blowing up. So I had to, um, you know, say, okay, we're pulling the ripcord on this vacation and we're biking back through that, you know, we've got to figure out how to get our bags back and, you know, deal with that. But, you know, it was one of those things where, you know, it needed to be done. It's, you know, vacations are vacations. That's kind of why I always, you know, buy vacation insurance. You know, it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's a little bit more of an expense, but it's, you know, people may be upset at some point in time, but that's part of the job. I mean, when you're.
Can I promise you kids something else?
Yeah, you gotta give them something, you know, new Playstation or some nonsense of that nature, but they're, they're easily bribed. But, um, but that's, you know, that's part of, you know, being in a leadership role is you just don't, you know, when things start to unravel and they really need your attention, you need to be on site. You know, that's, it's, it's part of the deal. It goes with, it goes with assuming that role. Um, you know, had that, um, trying to think of another, um, you know, another issue where we were, something was happening and I'm not sure there is, there was, you know, whether it's or, you know, you plan, you know, you're planning on leaving and then, you know, I know there was one time tribal council needed some information immediately and I was supposed to have the day off. So I just, okay, I'll have tomorrow off then. It's not that big a deal. I mean, drive in, talk to, you know, do what you need to do and then go home. So it wasn't, it's never been an issue. It's, it's, um, you know, there's not huge emergencies, you know, what I'm doing, you know, so it's not an everyday occurrence, you know, but I would assume, you know, yeah, there's tornado that blows through or a big storm or something like that. It's like, okay, well, we're not, um, you know, we're not, you know, focusing on vacation so much. I know there's a lot of times where, um, my wife's been less than pleased because instead of, you know, being at a beach, I'm, you know, writing emails or drafting some, you know, response to something or doing things like that. So, um, she tends to get a little excited when I'm doing a lot more on vacation. But, you know, again, it's something that, you know, if it needs to be done, 10 or 15 minutes is, you know, is usually all that it takes, but it's, it's not that big of a deal.
Okay. Tell us about a time when you understood a coworker's feelings or motives without directly communicating with him and how were you able to do that?
There was, you know, when you're, this is going back to, you know, when I was managing people on the trading desk, that there's, you know, there's a lot of, particularly in financial services, there's a big focus on income, salary, compensation, things like that. You know, it's really, you know, it's a money business, so money's a really good benchmark. And there's also when people develop a certain level of skills, if they have a skill that's, that's wanted by, you know, some other competitor, then people easily get poached. Um, you know, there's not usually contracts and there's, you know, you just leave, you know, there's not, you don't, in that instance, you don't really want somebody to be there for two or three weeks because, you know, lots of times you can do more damage. So it's when you quit is when you quit, you know. You don't usually ever get to pack up your desk. You know, you say you're quit, security escorts you outside of the, you know, outside of the security, turn in your badge, wait a couple of minutes and somebody packs up your desk and delivers it down to you. But there's, you know, you can, you can usually tell when somebody's either, you know, in an interview process or going through something or, you know, they're distracted. I mean, there's a certain point where, you know, you observe somebody working for a certain long amount of time and then that behavior kind of changes even in several different ways where you're, you know, you're kind of picking up on, picking up on that. So it became, you know, it was this conversation, basically of just, you know, what's going on? You seem to be, you know, you seem to be distracted. Is this, you know, are you looking for somewhere else to go or is this something where you've got an issue, you know, somewhere that's outside of that? Um, you know, it turned out to be something that was, that had nothing to do with outside of it. It was just a, you know, it's a personal issue, but it was something you're like, okay, there's something that's going on. And you're just kind of figuring that out. But, you know, and that's, you know, part of what you need to be as a manager is just paying attention to, you know, what's going on around you, you know, that kind of that situational awareness of, of all the people that are reporting to you to make sure that, you know, you know, if something's going sideways with them, that you can either, you know, help them through it or, you know, give them some space or some counseling or whatever they need to be successful. So you're not just, you know, blinders on, doing what you're doing and then hoping everybody's, you know, everybody's working along the same way.
Think of a situation where you found yourself without specific technical knowledge to perform a task essential of the project. So what did you do and what was the outcome?
Um, a good example is the SCADA system. I had no idea what that even meant until I, it just started working and we found out that that, that part of it didn't exist. So, um, I spent a lot of time doing research on even what it is, you know, how does it work? Um, what are the components of it? And then with that, we were able to, um, you know, put together an RFP for engineering services, for putting the, the system together, um, and then reviewing that with the engineering companies. We, you know, evaluated an engineering company, they put together an RFP, we added some stuff to it that they wrote, um, and then, you know, that was just sent out. And there was, you know, two parts of that. There was the software part and then there was the, um, physical installation of the, you know, the RTAC and all of the, the relaying and alarms and all of those things and just program, and then programming the whole thing. So, you know, I went from having no idea even what the acronym stood for to basically being the project manager and putting that all together. And as of this morning, I think we have everything that works except for, um, there was one, the only issue that we have is that the, the meter reads are five minutes behind what the SCADA system does. But we think it actually because the SCADA system is polling the meter 51 seconds after the end of the previous interval. So it's just rolling it forward in the five minute interval. If you want to get, you know, the technical details of this, but that's, you know, so we're trying to figure out whether, you know, which particular input we're polling off of the meter, you know, can we get it to where it aligns up with time? In reality, for the size of the load that we have, you know, whether my five minutes is, you know, is recorded as the 1300 hour or the 1301, 1305 interval, it's a small amount. It's not like we're disrupting MISO and throwing a whole bulk power system in the chaos, but it's one of those is that, you know, can we actually get this lined up? Can we get it to work? So we're, that's, that's it. We're trying to figure that out. Otherwise, it's got two remote, remote control stations plus we can access it anywhere on the globe with the VPN. And it's pulling all sorts of happy data into the database and now, you know, now I can take that and access that, um, you know, through any application we have or stuff that I designed internally, that we can use that for, you know, analytics, processing or projecting things or the maintenance. So we'll see, you know, we'll see if something starts to, you know, look sketchy and we can hone in on either that component or that part of the distribution, distribution system. So that was, that's a good example of, you know, having zero knowledge of something and then now I actually, you know, have a lot more than I thought I ever would on, you know, some of this, on some of the system.
Thank you. Um, do you want to, it's up to the group and up to you, do you want to take a five minute? Well, of course, we just finished question 14 and we've got 26, so we're a little over halfway through. You want to take a five minute break?
Uh, I can go either way. I can, we can continue on or we can take a break.
What would you, what would you like to do? Daniel?
I'm fine.
Okay, let's just, let's just power through this then. Um, so we're on to question 15, which was, Daniel? Okay.
Mine. Okay, so in your opinion, what are the biggest challenges or threats for smaller public power utilities?
Um, I think the biggest threat is probably going to be, you know, loss of load, you know, as, you know, if, if the community, if the. know, as, you know, if, if the community, if the be- community becomes, you know, non-competitive from an economic standpoint and businesses leave, you know, businesses are going to leave. That's probably the majority of the load that's served, you know. Probably, you know, some people are going to go along with that. You know, I'm not sure the exact economic structure, but I would assume that that's probably, you know, fair assessment that, you know, maintaining that competitiveness, um, you know, is probably a big thing. You know, I think, you know, incumbent utilities are probably always attacking everybody. You know, they always seem to have MPSC, you know, things that are out there. So, you know, other competitors trying to get access to the market or get access to the footprint or, you know, make it to where, you know, you're not competitively being able to produce power, you know, so they can take that, you know, they can try to take that load away. Um, you know, and then just, um, you know, kind of self-inflicted wounds, you know, losing, losing customer service and annoying people. Um, and then, you know, then your, you know, your, your, your offering isn't, is neither competitive nor, you know, something somebody wants to, you know, wants to take on. So I think those are kind of, you know, all kind of existen- existential threats that need to be managed. Certainly the, you know, the shooting yourself in the foot part is, you know, low-hanging fruit. They should be able to manage. Um, the other, the other things are just going to be, you know, in Michigan, they have the MPAA, you know, it's a pretty strong collective of other municipal associations. So that ability to deflect any attacks of the municipal power model is probably pretty strong. Um, you know, you know, making sure those organizations, you know, have the support of all the members and, you know, there's not fractioning of the different municipal, you know, power utility companies. You know, keeping, keeping that kind of, you know, on the, on the right path. I don't know how much you do, how much that would fall under, you know, a general manager role, but I'm certain, you're, you're interacting with all these other utilities through these trade organizations. So, you know, you know, that's, there's a certain, um, you know, not necessarily customer-facing, but, uh, I guess for lack of a better term, strategic partner-facing that you're going to have to do. That's, you know, that's incumbent with the role to make sure that your, your position, your position as a municipal power is, is secure and steadfast.
Thank you. Uh, one of our core values is to be strictly responsible. Explain FERC accounting and how it differs from GAAP reporting.
Now we're getting into the weeds.
So the next, we've gone through the kind of the-
The toss-up questions?
Yeah, none of the next questions are even being-
Maybe that break wasn't such a bad idea.
Not even being very technical.
I gotta look at the chart of accounts for the first thing. I'm just trying to figure all this out. A lot of, um, you know, that, that's probably, I guess for the lack of a better term, that's probably the weakest area that I have is, you know, getting down into the messy details of, of the FERC accounting structure. Um, it's a standardized structure, so when you, when you send out the EQR reports, everyone can look at and see kind of all of those, you know, the generation side. Since the tribe doesn't have any significant generation at all, we're not beholden to adopt those kind of standard, um, standard accounting principles. In fact, we don't even follow, you know, we follow GAAP accounting, but it's not under the, under the FASB rules. It's under the GASB rules for government accounting. So a lot of that, a lot of the electric stuff that we do for billing and distribution is based on the GASB application of, you know, for those for an eternal, or internal service fund. Um, so we don't have a lot of exposure out of the FERC chart of accounts and how everything is recorded. But I, you know, I've, I've read through it a couple of times knowing that at some point in time, we're probably going to have to adopt that once we, once we clip over a, a particular generation structure or generation, um, uh, nameplate capacity. But it's, you know, it's one of those where it's relatively rigid and they've got, you know, it's a couple hundred pages of put this number here if this equals here. And it's, you know, it's, it's complicated, but it's something that you can, you know, I think, you know, having good bookkeeping and controller staff and, you know, maybe outside accountants or outside, um, legal staff that, that really understands how to put those numbers in, you know, effectively is, you know, something that you're, you're going to want to have. I, I don't come from an accounting background. Um, you know, it's, it's, um, it's one of those things where I know enough about it, but I know enough about it that I know that there's other people that are a lot more qualified than I am to do that. You know, I have enough trouble with expense accounts and getting them submitted correctly and doing all of those things than, you know, a horribly complicated accounting construct from a regulatory agency. But I know, you know, it, it's, it's, it's something that you, you know, it's part of the, it's part of the, you know, being in the generation space. It's something you, you're just gonna have to, you know, you just have to deal with it. And, you know, it's not insurmountable. I mean, it is, it is standard, you know, dual-entry accounting system. It's so, you know, you can pick up on it as you work through it, but I wouldn't say, yeah, give me the books. I'm, I'm going to start, you know, entering the, the codes tomorrow. And that's, that would be a horrible idea.
Hey, next view. Um, capacity credits or charges? Can you describe them and how they work? How do they affect bottom line for utility?
Uh, depends on whether you're, whether you have enough excess capacity to sell into the market or you have to buy it. So when you're doing, when you're going through all of your, kind of your capacity planning, you know, in a certain generation, you're going to get zonal credits. And then zonal credits are going to turn into, you know, how much capacity you have to buy. So you have to put all of this framework together. You have to make a really complicated analysis and then you have to submit it to MISO. And then MISO will say, okay, we agree with your assumptions, but we think, you know, you're asking for, say, 25.3 megawatts of capacity. We think your calculations are wrong. You're going to have to buy 26.7 or something like that. So they'll come in and say, what is your, what is your gap for capacity? And then you can, you can, you can do a couple of things. You can participate in the auction, which, you know, you're really starting now. You'd have to put all that together. And then there's a stage that starts in February and then it goes through. And then May is the, you know, June is kind of the planning year where you're, you're for that. So you're going through all of those things. But you can also buy capacity from somebody else. So instead of having to, um, buy at the auction, you can kind of pre-purchase it and then submit that to MISO along with your kind of analysis of saying, yeah, we think we're going to owe this much. We've got this much nameplate capacity. This is the load we're, we're serving. This is kind of the load growth. We've got this covered. We also bought this, you know, kind of capacity strip for the next planning year to cover any shortfalls that we have. And then that way you're not exposed necessarily to the auction. Cause here in zone seven, it's brutal. I mean, you're, you know, we're almost two orders of magnitude higher than everybody else. Um, you know, we're actually, the auction went off at cone. So it went off at the maximum amount, which is, uh, cone is, sorry, it's a cost of new entry. So, um, that charge is effectively the cost per megawatt of putting in new generation capacity within this zone. And for whatever reason, this zone is abysmal with capacity. You know, everywhere else it's like seven bucks a megawatt day and here we're 253 or 257 and change. So, you know, that, that volatility and the whipsaw in the capacity market can blow apart your economics, particularly if you're running really, really thin on delivering. And suddenly you, you anticipate, you know, 24, 25 bucks a megawatt day for your capacity and it comes off at auction at, you know, 250. You know, that's a pretty significant deviation from any projection. And that's why, you know, you know, I've always looked at, okay, can we, can we not deal with the auction? And sometimes you overpay, but really, you know, if, if you're paying for it, the worst thing is, is you, you know, the lowest the price can go is zero effectively. But it has an unlimited cost on the upside, you know, until it gets capped out at, at, at the cone rate. So you've got, you, you, your risks are much more asymmetrically to the wrong side of the equation. Unless you've got a big bank of it that you're, you know, you're looking to sell, then it improves your economics. You know, so it just depends on what side of the, kind of what side of the capacity barrier you're going to be on, um, for any given particular planning year.
Where were you guys this past year and how far short?
Uh, we were a hundred percent short, but we were only pulling like a million and change.
No, we didn't enter any, any strips.
No, we were going to at some point, but the issue, the biggest issue is that the capacity, we're purchasing it through the, the EEI master, um, uh, master agreement, which we have to work with the counterparties because the tribal legal has, you know, this is a document that everyone's supposed to sign and it's a master agreement. So it's supposed to be standardized, but our legal department has about 10 pages of add-ons and different things that they want to change and different, you know, venues and all sorts of different things. So we've got to negotiate that with the counterparty. So the process is a little bit longer in terms of, in terms of picking that up. But, you know, we'll be, we'll be buying capacity and I found, I don't need that much. So luckily I found a couple of spots where I can, I can lift it. I've got just a little bit. Um, you know, if I needed, you know, you know, more than probably seven or eight megawatts, you know, it may be a little bit more difficult, but I've kind of found that, you know, a couple of providers that I can, I can get away with, you know, having them scrape a couple megawatts off for me and just, you know, sell it at whatever price. And as long as it's less than 250, I could care less. Or even if it's at that, I don't care. I mean, it's, you know, just, you know, save me the trouble of having to, you know, deal with and pay all the penalties for MISO for not having that resource adequacy in, in place.
Right.
So we've, you know, we've been able to, to work on that. And this is the first year that we've really been doing that as well. So we're trying to, you know, tune the system, get the agreements in place. And then each successive year, in theory, it's going to be, you know, less onerous and a little bit easier to deal with. But I think that's maybe a little bit of a pipe drain, just because I know how complicated the resource adequacy market auction is at the, you know, at the front end of all these, of the, all these planning years.
Right. I was just curious.
Yeah.
We had surplus here and we were able to sell and, you know, benefited us by hundreds of thousands.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's a home run if you've got surplus.
Yeah. Yeah, it was fantastic for us. So, found a lot of experience.
Yeah. And that's, that, you know, hopefully, you know, if you got surplus, it may, it may hold. Um, you know, they're changing the way solar's going to be into the capacity market. So they're giving solar a little bit more, a little bit more capacity. I think it was at like 25% of nameplate. I think we're bumping it close to 50.
Yeah, I think they're starting at 50 now.
And some, and then they're taking it up. And, but wind got clipped. Wind went from 18 to like 12 or high elevens or something like that. So it depends on the balance of what's out there.
Right.
So if there's a ton of wind, then there's going to be less capacity. So there's got to be a lot more development of solar to make up for the drop of the wind. So we could be for the next, you know, two or three years, you could still see, you know, monster capacity charges in this, in this particular zone. Um, but it'll just depend on what comes online and then, you know, how many coal plants are retired quickly and gets rid of that base load line or, you know, Palisades comes off. Cause I think Palisades, part of that is into PJM, but I think they're still selling some capacity into MISO.
Mm-hmm.
But that's a big, you know, that's what, 2.6 gigawatts or something like that that's, you know, could go offline in the next couple of years or pretty much anytime.
Yeah. Yeah. I was glad to hear your experience with capacity. You know, it's a big topic right now in Michigan with-
Yeah, it's-
The change in energy landscape.
Change in energy landscape, all of the, the auction results, all the new development, the switch over to renewables, all of that stuff has a big impact, it seems, here more than anywhere else. And I haven't really kind of figured out why that is. I've got some ideas on why it is, but I just don't, it, a lot of times it just, it doesn't seem to really make sense.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, there's congestion in terms of how much we can import. And then, you know, Michigan, um, you know, we have all these renewable energy mandates, but they have to be state of Michigan developed renewable energy.
Right.
And you have all these referendum votes, you know, saying no more wind development. All these things colliding.
Yeah, you've got-
Retirement of base load plants. Renewable energy has to be developed within the state for the RPS mandate, but nobody can develop it. And we have the lack of ability to import a ton of power being a peninsula state. And that's just going to continue to drive up capacity costs.
Yeah. And there's going to be, you know, that holding that there. And I think to some extent, you know, the, the 10% retail choice has, has an impact on that as well. I don't know how much it may or may not have, just because you don't have these ability to, you know, have kind of an investor-owned development that can sell to anybody. You know, every, every one of those, every one of those developments, it's either getting sold to DTE or consumers. You know, maybe Wolverine will pick off one here or there, but for the most part, you're going to, you know, you're developing for PPA for these two incumbents. And with the change in the purple law to where now it's, you know, they're not paying that premium for capacity and electricity. Your LMP priced off the, what's it, cons dot C E T Rs, then no pricing for, for all that purpose stuff. But, you know, the economics of that may slow the developments outside of, you know, kind of the, you know, all these other, you know, you know, established utility companies. And, you know, that's, I think that's kind of an opportunity as well is that if that's, you know, if capacity stays high, that's one, you know, it's a riskier way of financing it. But if you can, you know, you, you build that into the model of how long do we think this is last? I mean, what's the forward capacity curve look like? That you can make, you can make some cases for, you know, building out some additional generation of renewable space and then using the tax credits of financing plus the, you know, the forward-looking capacity, um, you know, to make some of those projects work that maybe on a marginal basis they wouldn't. It's probably a riskier strategy, but, you know, it's, if you're, if you're balancing it with some, you know, something on the other side, you kind of, kind of look, holistically look at the entire, you know, kind of generation fleet and the risk of all of that, you know, as you're, as you're developing things as a utility, you know, there, there could be some opportunity. It's just, you know, understanding the markets and how it can change. Cause, you know, it's no different than FTRs. Everybody loads into a particular flow gate that always has congestion and they don't read the MTAP from five years ago and find out, oh, well, next year they're going to just reconductor this whole thing and that's all going away. You know, there's been a couple of places. One, you know, one just blew up the other day. I saw that they, you know, they're in arrears of MISO for like quarter of a million dollars because, because their FTR portfolio blew up. So they got all cut off. I don't, I didn't get any details on how it happens, but, you know, those are typically things that do happen is they load up on the congestion side and then, you know, from five years ago, the transmission upgrades, you know, now are starting to get built and that flow gate disappears. So now instead of them collecting money, they've got to pay it out because there's no congestion on that particular line or on that particular circuit.
Thank you. Um, how do utility line losses affect the utility's electric rates and power cost adjustment factor?
Well, you're getting, you know, as you're losing, you know, losing more, I mean, you've got to degenerate, you know, you've got a certain, you know, load that you need to generate, to deliver is different than the load you need to generate. So that, you know, whatever you lose on those lines, whether it's, you know, old equipment or, you know, conductors that aren't side right or, you know, this, this area kind of grew, that kind of factors into how you're going to be dealing with, you know, what your cost of generation is versus your essentially kind of cost of delivery. So that, you know, those losses need to be factored in your rate base case, you know, as you're building, because you're building the rates out, so you're not upside down just because you miscalculated. You know, you thought you had a 4% loss and you had a 5% loss and that strips all of your margin out because you're, you're delivering that, you know, you're delivering that with more losses than you anticipated.
Explain the importance of, uh, the utility's rate structure and any experience or knowledge that you have, uh, with the rates. Got any question?
Yeah, I'm, that's, you know, in a lot of ways, that's the whole kettle of fish. I mean, you're, you know, the generation is generating something, but unless you're, unless you're collecting revenue from what you're generating, you know, you're upside down. So understanding, you know, understanding all the costs of generation, delivery, capital upgrades, you know, maintenance reserves, all of those different things factor into, you know, establishing a cost structure and controlling that cost structure. Then that kind of pushes out rates at some end. You know, you've got, you know, these are the costs we need to, you know, have. This is kind of the, you know, if you, if you want to kind of, you know, required or target ROI on those different things. on those different things, you've gotta kind of build that in. And that's what, you know, when, you know, when informing the utility, that's one of the first things that we did, was try to identify all the input costs. The, the tribe doesn't have any generation, but we certainly have a ton of cost on the other end of that, you know, serving that power, even if it's to ourselves. So in some extent, we're, you know, we're taking money from left pocket, putting it into the right, but that's at the start. As soon as we start bringing in non-tribal entities, now we're importing, you know, we're essentially importing capital, selling them a service. So the rate structure needs to be really solid to make sure that we're not losing money on them. If, you know, if we miss it and we're selling to the casino, yeah, we look like idiots because we can't figure out our own rate structure, but it's not catastrophic to the organization. If we miss the rate structure and we're selling to another entity and we're losing, you know, five bucks a megawatt because we can't add, then that becomes problematic. So, understanding, you know, all of the different things that go into the rate structure. So not only, you know, your cost of operation, your cost of delivery, your maintenance capital structure, but also the tariff structure you're under in, in MISO. Like, we're, um, mid-Schedule Nine, um, you know, customer. So, there's a particular tariff that we pay per megawatt year that provides all of the, all of the transmission. So understanding where our peak load is, gonna be within the coincident load, you know, modeling that out, you know, that can have, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of swing value to that, you know, and then trying to figure out what the load shape is, you know, of these different things, and using that to, you know, push all of the other tariffs, and then, you know, the capacity consideration, and then where the power is being, power is being drawn, whether it's self-generated or purchased off of the, you know, the, off of the, the LMP rates or some other power purchase standby agreements. Because at some point in time, you know, if you have unplanned outages, you know, what is the, what's the effect of the unplanned outages? And can you build that into the rate case, um, just as a contingency? I mean, you're not gonna put all of it in there, but, you know, even a little bit tries, kind of eases the pain of those unplanned outages and things like that. So there's a, there's a lot of moving parts into, going into, you know, rate building. And, you know, that's one thing that I think that's, you know, if you're gonna spend more time doing, it's that, is really understanding your cost structure, all those contingencies, and make sure that all that stuff is built into the rate. Because the last thing you wanna do is, is, you know, stand up before, you know, any governing body and say, "Well, we were close, but we didn't quite make it, and we missed these three things," which, you know, arguably we may should have, you know, caught, but we didn't, and now we're, you know, we thought we were gonna make, you know, a couple million dollars, and now we're losing eight million dollars because we can't add.
Yeah, how do your rates, how's your rate structure perform? You have such a limited number of customers.
Limited number of customers. We also didn't know what our, we didn't know what our load profile was gonna be. So it's just, the way we, the way we, we took that on is we, you know, kind of, we take the, the, the all-in cost of energy, so for both the, the market tariffs, the transmission tariffs, the energy costs, congestion, all that. So, that shakes out, you know, whatever it is, because we're just buying at the raw LMP at this point in time. So I didn't want to, you know, buy a particular load shape and be locked into something because I don't know what it is. We went from, you know, eight-hundred slots in a small building to, uh, thirteen or fourteen-hundred slots at a hundred-and-fifty key hotel, and the wastewater treatment plant is providing all of the water. So they're, they're extra, they got a load increase along with just a, you know, something that never existed before. We had no operating history off of this. So we just wanted to try to, you know, see what was going on with that, get at least one year. You know, if we get eight-hundred-and-seventy, or eighty-seven-hundred hours of operating history, buy a little bit better idea of how to kind of secure that and adjust the volatility of the LMP prices. Um, and, but we did is we just took kind of that number, since it's all internal, and then we added, you know, kind of adders-on for administrative charges. So, you know, the, the desk running all and dealing with all of MISO things, we add a certain amount for that, and then we have amount for basically debt repayment, so kind of a debt service thing, because, you know, that money came out of it, you know, out of the investment account, if you will, or, you know, development account. So we wanna make sure that, you know, the, the money goes back from the substation and goes back and replenishes that account. And then there's, uh, operating and maintenance reserve. So we're building a reserve for when things start to go wrong. It's brand-new, it's shiny, the copper hasn't even tarnished yet on a lot of these, a lot of this stuff. So, you know, we're not really necessarily worried about it, but we don't wanna have to go, you know, five years forward and say, "Oh, this thing happened and we've got no money, so you have to give us money to fix this thing." We wanna be able to say, "This thing broke, we've got this much money to keep. All we need is a, all we need is an authorization to pull this little piece of that pie out to go fix this thing so we can turn stuff back on."
So, yeah, all of these different components that you're collecting for in your rate structure, what different, do you have one variable kilowatt-hour charge? That's, consists of a number of things, or do you break it out into a demand component in your rate?
Just bake it up, break it out to a demand component at this point, because it's all internal. I mean, I'm only selling to another department. So we can just say, "Okay, here's what we got charged for last month, this is what you guys used, these are the, these are the tariffs that are added onto it, and this is all of the internal cost allocation." Once we, you know, once we'll have, you know, once we get a non-tribal entity, we can't necessarily do that, although, in all of the conversations I've had with a lot of people, was, you know, "Do you want a fixed cost that never varies? Or do you want a little bit of variability and more transparency, and I'll help you hedge your cost?" So...
So you get charged and internally break that up?
Correct.
To the several meters that you have?
Exactly. So all the different departments. So casino operations gets one, tribal admin gets one, utilities for the wastewater treatment, they get one, and then, you know, that's all just kind of broken up internally, and then all the extra added charges on it, so they see that. When we deal with non-tribal entities, um, you know, depends, it's, it's gonna depend on two things. It's gonna depend on whether or not FERC really wants us to put a tariff structure together or we can just charge somebody. And that's kind of a gray area, we don't know yet, so we're still working on trying to figure that out. But even if we do, we think we can structure it to where we can have a couple of different tariff structures. We can have the, the fixed cost, no variability, you pay this, and, you know, move on with your day. Very, you know, no, no different than a, than a regular utili-, you know, kind of an incumbent utility. Or, you know, going the opposite way of, this is what the costs have been, you know, at the LMP, or this is the price we've paid, is you'd see a lot more volatility, but we can give you more transparency into your energy cost. And high-energy users, they kind of tend to like that, because if the prices are lower, I'm losing a little bit on margin, but I'm getting a stickier customer. So if I can, you know, articulate, this is what we need. So if we need, I need a twelve percent return on what we're doing, and this is, you know, so I'm gonna take whatever we get charged by MISO, plus all the tariffs, I'm gonna add twelve percent onto that, because that's my, you know, because that's kind of our take on the, or our, our return component of that. So you'll see a lot more transparency, and because we're doing it that way, we can work with those bigger users and use some of the virtual markets to hedge, or use the commodity markets to hedge, you know, a longer utilities, or a longer electric rate strip. But we can do day ahead, where we can work with them and say, "Okay, what time are you turning on these machines in the morning? How, you know, when do you wanna use those power? I'll, I'll lock in your costs in the day-ahead market for these particular hours, and then you'll, you know, whatever other operations you're paying at this other rate." So we can, we can deliver that to other, you know, to other entities and really add transparency where there isn't any. And a lot of the guys that understand, you know, the big corporate buyers, that's, has some value to them, um, as well. So they're kind of, they're interested in the concept. I don't know if it'll go anywhere, but, you know, it may be that we just, you know, cut them a rate and call it a day.
So, so I have a couple of questions, um, that I think are pertinent to that. So, how many, how many meters do you have? And what I still, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, um, I'm gonna be pretty blunt. You need to sell me, or make me understand...